Good afternoon. This is Kathleen Drew, Chair of the Energy Facility Site Evaluation Council, calling to order our public informational meeting tonight. I will say that this is a meeting about solar project called the Carragher Solar Project and as required by RCW 8050-0901 and WAC, that's Washington Administrative Code 46326025. EFSEC is holding this public informational meeting. At this meeting, EFSEC staff and the applicant will introduce themselves and the Council for the Environment, who is an Assistant Attorney General appointed by the Washington Attorney General, and that person will be introduced and explain the duties of this position. The applicant and EFSEC staff will make presentations. Following the presentations, the public will be invited to provide comments. Speakers will have two minutes each to speak. I know that some were told we would have three minutes, but we had so many more people sign up that we want to give everybody an equal opportunity to be heard this evening. If you do not say all you wish to say to us, you can send your comments in writing to comments@efsec.wa.gov. And an online database is open during the meeting until midnight tonight, and so you can go straight into that comment database and provide your comments. And that is HTTPS://comments.efsec.wa.gov. At this point, I would ask for Ms. Grantham to call the roll.
Certainly. Department of Commerce? Department of Ecology?
You're live at present.
Department of Fish and Wildlife?
Mike Livingston, present.
Department of Natural Resources?
Lenny Young, present.
Utilities and Transportation Commission?
Stacy Brewster, present.
Local Government and Optional State Agencies. For the Carragher Solar Project, for Clickatack County, do we have Matt Childs?
Matt Childs, present.
For the Assistant Attorney Generals, Jenna Slocum?
Jenna Slocum, present.
And John Thompson? For the Administrative Law Judge, Micah Laripa?
Micah Laripa is present.
Our EFSEC Council Staff, Sonya Bumpis? Amy Hoffgemeyer?
Amy Hoffgemeyer, present.
Joan Owens is present. Sean Green?
Sean Green, present.
Joanne Snarsky?
Joanne Snarsky, present.
Alex Shiley?
Alex Shiley, present.
And for the Council for the Environment, we have Sarah Reinaveld. Are you there?
Sarah Reinaveld, present.
Thank you, Chair. We have a quorum for the regular council and for Carragher Solar. Thank you.
Thank you. We will begin with the presentation from the Council for the Environment. Would you, Ms. Reinaveld, please state your role and what the public can do if they're concerned about this project?
Yes, Sarah Reinaveld, and I'm the assigned Council for the Environment for the Carragher Solar Project. Council for the Environment represents the public and its interest in protecting our environment, and you are welcome to reach out to me. My email is sarah, S-A-R-H dot Reinaveld, R-E-Y-N-E-V-E-L-D, at ATG.wa.gov. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have the EFSEC process presentation. Ms. Hoffgemeyer?
Thank you, Chair Drew. Welcome, everybody. My name is Amy Hoffgemeyer. I am the Director of Siting and Compliance for EFSEC, and I will be giving a short presentation on the EFSEC siting process for those of you who are unfamiliar with our agency. Next. A little bit of history of the EFSEC agency. EFSEC was created in 1970 for the siting of thermal power plants. The intent was to create a one-stop permitting agency for large energy facilities. EFSEC is comprised of state and local government members who review each application before voting to make a council recommendation to the governor. If recommending approval, the package to the governor includes a draft site certification agreement, or SCA, which defines all pre-construction, construction, and operations plans. If approved by the governor's office, the decision preempts other state or local regulations. Multiple energy generation facilities fall under EFSEC's jurisdiction. Some projects, including thermal power plants greater than 350 megawatts and nuclear generation for the purposes of generating electricity, are required to be cited through EFSEC, while others such as wind, solar, green hydrogen storage, or clean energy manufacturing can opt in to our process at any size. Transmission lines greater than 115 kilovolts can also opt in, and there are thresholds for pipelines and refineries that may be cited through EFSEC that are found in the Revised Code of Washington, or RCW 80.50.060. EFSEC is comprised of members from several different state-level agencies. The chairperson is appointed by the governor, and there are standing members from five other agencies appointed by those agencies to sit on the council. The current council is made up of Chairwoman Kathleen Drew, Eli Levitt from the Department of Ecology, Mike Livingston from the Department of Fish and Wildlife, Kate Kelly from the Department of Commerce, Lenny Young from the Department of Natural Resources, and Stacy Brewster from the Utilities and Transportation Commission. There are additional agencies that may elect to appoint a council member during the review of an application. These agencies are the Department of Agriculture, the Department of Transportation, the Department of Health, and the Military Department. These agencies have not appointed a council member for the review of the Carragher project. The local county shall also appoint a council member for the review of an application, and Clickatack County has appointed Matt Childs. Next. Here's a map of the facilities that are certificated or have applied for certification under EFSEC's jurisdiction. You can see marked in green, there are six operating facilities, including two natural gas facilities, one nuclear facility, one solar facility, and two wind facilities. The blue marks indicate the four additional facilities that are approved but have yet to start construction, two being wind facilities and two being solar facilities. The clear marker is the one facility in the process of decommissioning, and EFSEC is currently reviewing applications for five projects, including the Carragher project, which is what brings us here tonight. So here's a flow chart showing the general process an applicant will go through when they submit an application to EFSEC. There are green arrows on the chart that indicate specific milestones in the process where the council and staff seek public input. You can see here that there are multiple processes that happen concurrently when EFSEC is reviewing an application. There is the land use hearing and adjudicative process outlined on the far left, the State Environmental Policy Act, or SEPA, process outlined in the middle, and the third process on the far right involves identifying and preparing applicable environmental permits. All of these processes ultimately feed into the council's recommendation to the governor. Where an adjudication is required following the land use consistency hearing, an order is issued to commence proceedings and initiate intervention. Here, members of the public wishing to participate in the adjudication must identify themselves and their issues in writing. There are pre-hearing conferences through which parties are granted intervention status and issues are identified. Exhibits and testimony are provided and cross-examination is conducted, after which the council looks at all the information in the adjudication record and deliberates. Finally, the council develops an order establishing their findings of fact and conclusions of law from the information provided throughout those proceedings. Moving on to the middle tier, for every project proposed, a SEPA review is performed. When a determination of significance and a decision to prepare an environmental impact statement, or EIS, is made, public comments are taken on the scope of the EIS. After public comment for scoping, the SEPA responsible official determines the scope of the EIS, a draft EIS is prepared and issued with a minimum 30-day public comment period, after which the final EIS is prepared and released. In some instances, a determination of nonsignificance, a DNS, or mitigated determination of nonsignificance, MDNS, is issued. If the SEPA responsible official determines that a project meets the criteria of a DNS or MDNS, an EIS is not required. In this process, the determination is noticed to the public, and there is a minimum 15-day public comment period for an MDNS, while a DNS requires no comment period. Following the conclusion of these separate avenues of application review, the council develops its recommendation to the governor, tying together the information brought forth through the application review processes. Next. I'd like to talk briefly about the expedited siting process as it has been requested for the Carragher proposal. To be considered for expedited processing, an applicant must make the request in writing, and the project must meet two criteria. First, it must be determined to be consistent with local land use ordinances and codes; and second, the SEPA determination must be that of a DNS or MDNS. In this expedited process, and the adjudication step is not required, and a full EIS is not developed. The council prepares their recommendation to the governor in an expedited timeframe under this process. Next. EFSEC is also the issuing agency for any applicable environmental permits that a facility may require, including water quality and air quality permits, as they may apply. These permits are identified in the final package with the council's recommendation to the governor. Next. At the conclusion of the council's review of an application, a recommendation is made to the governor to either approve or reject the application. This initiates a 60-day window within which the governor will then either approve the application, reject the application, or remand the application back to the council for reconsideration. Any application that is rejected by the governor is a final decision for that application. If an application is approved by the governor, EFSEC then has oversight of the environmental compliance for the life of the facility through decommissioning. EFSEC has standing contracts with applicable state agencies that assist in the monitoring and enforcement of conditions either in the site certification agreement, identified permits, or EIS or MDNS. EFSEC's enforcement authority extends to the issuance of any penalties as they may apply. As previously mentioned, EFSEC oversees facilities under its jurisdiction through decommissioning. Prior to the start of construction of approved projects, an initial site restoration plan, or ISRP, is required. Then, at the end of the life of the facility, prior to the start of decommissioning, a detailed site restoration plan is required. These plans must be reviewed and approved by the council. The project must also provide financial assurance for the decommissioning in the event that the project is no longer able to complete the process. Assuming the project decommissions while still under full control of the developer, those costs would be paid directly by the certificate holder. So that concludes my presentation this evening. Before I end, I would like to reiterate how everybody can submit comments for this proposal. If you'd like to sign up to speak this evening, and you are joining us virtually or by phone, you can call the EFSEC mainline at 360-664-1305 to be added to the speaker list. You may also send in written comments by postal mail to our office at 621 Woodland Square Loop, PO Box 43172, Olympia, Washington, 98504-3172. Comments may also be submitted to our online database at HTTPS://comments.efsec.wa.gov. There is also a database available for the duration of the meeting for anyone wishing to submit comments through our online database. Oh, I just said that. Sorry. It should be 05, shouldn't it? 45. I apologize. If you want to talk to me directly, dial 05. In case you were curious where that little slip came from. All comments received, regardless of method of delivery, will be saved with the project record and available for council and staff review.
Chair Drew, your microphone is off, so online cannot hear you.
Oh, thank you. No problem. Okay, let's see if we can get the rest of this. Right. Okay, next we have Cypress Creek Renewables with their presentation.
Thank you, Chair Drew. Thank you, everyone, for joining us this evening. My name is Lauren Altick. I'm a project developer at Cypress Creek, specifically for the Carragher project. Thanks. Can everyone hear me okay? And I'm here with Ty Wallace, Senior Director of Transmission. And next slide, please. Next slide, please. And we are going to be introducing the core project team, give an overview of Cypress Creek Renewables, the company, and provide an introduction to Carragher Solar. And the appendix provides the application for site certification site plan seats for the record. And I will pass it on to Ty, or actually, I'll do the introduction to... Next slide, please. So already introduced Ty and myself. Our environmental director is Seiya Stratton. Our Senior Environmental Manager, Julie Alpert, both with CCR. And we have Leslie McLean with Tetra Tech, and she is our environmental consultant, project manager. And Leslie's with us this evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Chair Drew, EFSEC Council staff, and thank you all stakeholders for joining us today. Next slide, please. So my name is Ty Wallace. I'm Senior Director of Development here at Cypress Creek, and I cover transmission scale markets in the West with a heavy and intent focus in the state of Washington. So Cypress is a mission-driven company. Our mission is powering a sustainable future, one project at a time. And we've been in business since 2014. We were founded and to date have developed over 800 projects across the country. We own and operate over 200 projects. And, you know, we develop through our five core competencies, or what we call our five Cs, you know, care, courage, collaboration, creativity, and conviction. Next slide, please. So our core competencies include development, operations and maintenance services, and fleet services, so effectively asset management. These are through business divisions. We have about 400 staff spread across the country, and we operate in about 24 states. In terms of our development portfolio, we have about 12 gigawatts of solar energy projects developed to date, and we have about 55 megawatts of storage that's developed to date and in operations. We have a policy-driven strategy, so we look at markets, you know, from top to bottom, and we're very thoughtful before we enter those markets, and we do a lot of stakeholder engagement at the market level before we even conceive of an individual project. We have diversified experience with both transmission scale development and community scale development, which is more distributed generation. And believe to get to a sustainable future, you have to develop on both sides of the transmission and distribution system. We have an award-winning structured finance team, and we have done a lot of financing for assets and, you know, for others as well. And we have an innovative reconstruction and design, and third by the UPC contracting team. Justin, who leads that for the Pacific Northwest and joins us today, brings immense experience both at the utility level, at the construction and contracting level, and now joins us, you know, at our project level to take, you know, our projects to fruition and make sure that we meet the standards under permitting. So in terms of O&amp;M services, you know, we are a fully vertically-integrated independent power producer, or IPP. We develop projects with the intent, as often as we can, to own and operate those projects for the long term. And we have four gigawatts of projects under contract. We only operate and maintain solar and storage projects. Those four gigawatts under contract are both our own assets and assets of other developers and other shops. We have a state-of-the-out NERC-registered control center that has 24/7/365 operations and control, and remote maintenance capabilities for all of our assets that we operate for ourselves and others. And we have, you know, business services that include warranty administration, all of the compliance requirements in all of the markets that we operate, industry-leading drone program, and one of the best total recordable incident rates in the industry in terms of safety, compliance, and standards. And then in terms of our fleet, we operate two gigawatts of projects, spanning 217 individual assets across 14 states. These projects are managed 24/7, and, you know, through our Asset Management and Fleet Division, we pay all of our bills, all of our tax bills, and, you know, manage all of the filings and requirements for each of these projects day in, day out. Next slide, please. So in terms of, you know, our solar and development growth, you know, we again are vertically-integrated, you know, a full solar-focused IPP, focused on just solar and storage development. This is our bread and butter. This is what we've done, you know, time in and time out. And we have done this, you know, across the country in multiple different states. Next slide, please. This slide just shows, you know, actual pictures and images from our 24/7/365 NERC-certified control center. This facility is located in Raleigh Durham, North Carolina. And, you know, this is manned or stationed by our folks who have some of the highest safety standards and some of the deepest industry experience across the solar and energy industry. A number of folks come from a nuclear plant operations background, from utility backgrounds, and they're very experienced at what we do. And we can see and remotely monitor and operate all of our facilities across the country, all 217. Next slide, please. So part of what we try to do in terms of development is educate, you know, folks about what solar is. There's a lot of, you know, mystery, you know, about what it is these facilities do, especially in a community that does not have existing, you know, generating solar assets to date. So, you know, when you look at the key systems and components, they're effectively broken up into solar modules, which actually generate the DC electricity from the sunlight. You know, the goal of these pieces of equipment is to absorb as much sunlight and convert that to as much energy as possible. That DC electricity then runs into the DC AC inverter, where it's converted to alternating current, and it is stepped up to a medium voltage. Those modules are placed on racking systems, which are, you know, essentially galvanized steel, and those are embedded into the ground and the subsurface. And they're rated to withstand all types of, you know, events and, you know, power through things like hurricane and wind events, manage snow load and wind load, and all of those other aspects. The combiner boxes take that low-voltage DC electricity, and they feed those cables, you know, from each module row into a combiner box. Those then feed into the cabling, into the inverters, and then go into the medium voltage collector lines. Our monitoring systems, which are critical, are all our meters and gauges that we use to measure and report system preferences and performances back to our O&amp;M facility, both on-site and in North Carolina. And in the case of battery systems, and for this project, AC coupled, that system is a series of lithium-ion batteries that will store that energy safely for use throughout the day. Next slide, please. And so what we took here is a sampling of a few of our projects that we've developed. We have a number of smaller assets at the distribution level that we've developed and operate in Oregon. So we wanted to show projects that are contextually relevant from a geographic location perspective. And then we also wanted to show large projects that represent designs that accommodate, you know, some of these environmental features and things like we do here, such as our Wagyu project in Texas, which is near the scale of this project, and our IS-37 project in North Carolina, where we have built and developed hundreds of projects to date. Next slide, please. And so I'm going to pass it back to Lauren to take you through the Carragher project.
Okay, so Carragher Solar is a 160-megawatt solar project with the option for a 63-megawatt battery storage system. We have full site control. Interconnection studies are complete. Transmission studies are complete, and we have transmission rights secured. All topographic, geotech, hydraulic, and hydrologic assessment studies have been completed. The land use consistency hearing and site certification will go through EFSEC, as Amy previously discussed. All preliminary field surveys have been complete, and the SEPA determination will go through EFSEC as well. I will discuss that in the next slide, in the next few slides. Well-endilination has been completed. We're avoiding all potential fish-bearing waterways. And we have completed a third-party property tax assessment that I will also be discussing on the next slide. Lastly, the initial engineering procurement and construction, RFP, has been complete. Justin on our team is going to be working on that going forward. And yeah, that's where we're at. Lots going on since the start of development in 2018. Next slide. So the economic benefits that are directly attributable to Carragher, the property tax revenue projections were done by a third party, and these estimates are based on 2023 tax levies through the county. So obviously, this will vary, but it is an educated estimate and can be used as a reference point at this time. Aside from local investment, Carragher is estimated to create between 350 and 450 full-time construction jobs that will have a ripple effect in the local economy. And then there are obviously the environmental benefits. Carragher is anticipated to provide enough electricity to power 32,500 homes annually, clean energy. And the carbon offset is estimated to be the equivalent of 10,800 cars off the road each year. Next slide, please. So I'm going to spend a bit of time on this slide as I expect this is of interest to the community. So the project is designed with safety measures in mind to address concerns for fire, noise, and glare specifically. It has been designed to meet environmental noise limits established by the Washington Administrative Code. And an acoustic assessment report was completed. The results indicated that the project will comply with the most stringent 50-decibel nighttime limit at all noise-sensitive receptors. A glare analysis was also completed and predicted no glare at receptor points around the project area, and very limited amounts of glare along Knight Road and State Route 142, and those were only during certain times of the year. A copy of the glare study was provided to the FAA. The FAA determined no hazard for air navigation from the solar project. Moving on to electric and magnetic fields, they will be produced. It's electrical equipment. They're produced from all electrical equipment when the conductors are connected to a power source, such as a lamp, a microwave, et cetera. That said, the project's solar panels and collector lines are expected to produce very low levels of EMF, and no EMF from the project equipment is anticipated to extend beyond the project area boundary. Moving on to fire safety, design elements are incorporated throughout the entire project design to minimize risk of fire ignition. The best containers include state-of-the-art fire prevention and suppression, excuse me, systems. Significant amount of progress on these technologies in recent years, and will only continue to be so. Project operations will be monitored 24/7, as Ty already discussed previously. A 20-foot fire break will be maintained along the entire perimeter of the fence lines. And lastly, a fire control plan will be prepared and submitted to EFSEC and the county prior to construction. Fire suppression protocols will be determined in consultation with the Clickatack County Fire Marshal, and will be outlined in a fire control plan. Lastly, local building and electrical inspectors will review and approve construction levels, prior level permits prior to construction of the project. So a lot on this slide. It is on the EFSEC website, so you can review in further detail. Next slide, please. Moving on to permitting and SEPA. So EFSEC is obviously responsible for evaluating applications for site certification to ensure that the environmental and socioeconomic impacts are considered before making a recommendation to the governor to approve or deny the project. The State Environmental Policy Act, or SEPA checklist, is included in this application for site certification. And you can see all of the emblems that we included. Those are the various aspects of this Environmental Policy Act, of which many have been designated necessary. Of which many have been designated necessary for Carragher to undergo in this application. Next slide, please. So Cypress Creek, the team has consulted, coordinated with various local, state, tribal and federal agencies, of which the list is on the screen. And many of the SEPA studies cited on the previous slide was discussed with these applicable agencies to ensure that proper survey protocols were followed. Coordination with these agencies will be ongoing throughout the review process. Next slide, please. This slide shows the actual studies that were conducted. So the topic is to the left, study is to the right. All of these are included in our application and are listed on our website. The visual impact assessment was submitted to EFSEC on April 18th and it's also been uploaded to the website. So everyone from the public is welcome to review these, these studies. Next slide, please. This is an example of Carragher Solar, what went into our micro sighting. Cypress Creek prides itself on very intentional and conscientious project design. So the first visual in the lower left, you can see there are quite a bit of panels around the waterways. And I'm sorry, don't have a beam, but that's where all the gray, you know, sections are, those represent panels. So that was prior, oh, thank you so much. Yeah, exactly. So that was prior to the consultation with agencies, prior to all of the studies that we conducted. The next slide in the middle or the next picture in the middle shows the next iteration where you know, we started to learn more about the land, got more information, tweaked the site plan. The final one you can see was after all the consultation, after all of our studies were complete. And we removed the entire middle area there from the project site plan to allow for wildlife movement. And to account for burnout pools, waterways, et cetera. And another thing to know, we are not cutting down any trees on this project. We have been very intentional with setbacks and allowing for wildlife movement and habitat and the like. Next slide, please. And to end, I wanted to circle back to the community. Cypress Creek is seeks to establish relationships with the community that we develop in. We focus on four primary areas, environmental sustainability, STEM education, workforce development. Economic development and community investment and veterans initiatives. This is something that we take very seriously all the way up the chain at our company. So we're doing so here in Clickatuck. We already have initiatives underway. Most recently, there's a Clickatuck County Scholarship Program, May 5th deadline. If anyone has not heard of that, please reach out and I can provide additional information. But we will be continuing to partner with the community throughout the life, life of the project. It's something that we take very seriously. And next slide, and that's it. And again, just to note, we do have the site plans in the appendix, but just for the record, there was nothing specific that we were going to reference. And the site plans are available on the EFSEC website. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We are now going to move on to our public comment portion of this meeting. Thank you all for being here tonight and also online on this lovely day in your community here. It's a pleasure to be here and we look forward to hearing each and from each and every one of you who wish to speak. And so we are going to limit, as I said earlier, limit comments to two minutes. We're going to start with asking you to state your name and then spell your first and last name because we have a court reporter. And we want to take an accurate record of the people who are speaking tonight. And I will turn it over to Judge Laripa, who will be presiding over this portion of the meeting. Judge?
Thank you Chair Drew and good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I am Michael Laripa and I serve as an administrative law judge with the Washington State Office of Administrative Hearings, a neutral and independent state agency. For the comments, which will begin momentarily and Alex Shiley, right over to my left, has taken down the names of people who wish to speak. And we'll call each of you up in the order that is signed up. If you're here in person, please step up to the podium and, and as Chair Drew mentioned, please state and spell your name. And then I'll invite you to begin with your comments. I am mindful that the two minutes may not be enough time to conclude whatever you'd like to say tonight. Again, in the interest of ensuring that everybody has the opportunity to speak, we must limit the time. But please understand that you will have the opportunity to submit anything additional. Or if after you've spoken, you hear something else that you desire to comment on, you may do so in writing. I will ask, I understand that we have a number of people who wish to speak tonight. I will ask that while you wait for your opportunity to speak or after you've spoken, if you're still in attendance. That you be respectful and courteous to the speaker who is up at the podium. With that, Alex, would you please call the first, the first speaker this evening?
We'll be hearing from County Commissioner Dan Christopher.
You know, saying here clarification question. So if we have written comment from the county itself, can I submit that to somebody here or do we have to do that online?
We have a comment, yeah, a comment box in the back.
Thank you. Chair and members of the EFSEC Board, I am Clickatuck County Commissioner Dan Christopher. And this is my district. I am here speaking on behalf of the voters of the Clickatuck County. I believe Clickatuck County is the green energy capital of Washington state. We have and continue to be pro green energy. This county has permitted, it in itself has permitted over 602 windmills, a landfill gas facility that is second to none. And 140, 194 megawatt solar farm. We are also currently permitting another 150 megawatt solar farm in the county. We have many more solar, wind and water pump storage projects planned and coming. And we are welcoming of them as long as they can continue to be sensitively cited. As you can see, we are pro green energy. I am sure that many of you have dealt with many anti-green energy counties in the past, but please understand that we are different. We also are a county that wants to sensitively cite our projects in a way that doesn't hurt our people. We have areas of our county that have been deemed by the state as poor and impoverished. Areas that are begging for growth and economic development. Yes, I am speaking of Goldendale, which is where you are. There are currently three to four solar companies looking to surround this poor and impoverished community on all sides with about 10,000 acres of solar panels. That would forever stifle growth, economic development and jobs in this area. That would be a three year boom, followed by 40 years of economic devastation. You may hear testimony from some people today looking to cash in on that short term money grab. I am not one of them. As Chairman of the Clickatuck County Board of Commissioners, I am begging you to honor and allow us to work through our current solar moratorium and create population density criteria in this valley. Let us work with the residents to establish areas in our county where we can continue to sensitively cite solar projects in a way that won't cripple this community or. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, sir, for your comments.
Next we'll have County Commissioner Lori Zoller.
I did submit comments to EFSEC in anticipation of timing. I tried to cut them down, so I'll try to give you the short version. Clickatuck County is an overachiever in green energy. Starting in 1990s, we opened a program at our landfill to capture methane gas and turn it into energy. Clickatuck County currently has 602 operating wind towers. And we're in the process of the pump storage project, which the governor himself has touted and turned as the state of art green energy project for Washington state. Clickatuck County is currently the largest supplier of green energy in the state of Washington. In 2005, we enacted the first energy overlay zone. That energy overlay zone focused on wind at the time. Discussions and planning for solar at the time were barely a side note and directed at personal or small projects. The creation of the E O Z, a single environment, with the creation of the single, excuse me, with the creation of the E O Z, a single environmental impact statement was produced. Intended as a blanketed EIS for the construction of wind projects. But in the final stages, the E O Z was appealed. Requirements were set in place at that time that if large solar came in to our county. Each would require site by site its own EIS. And the county would also retain the right to be the lead agency for large scale solar or be allowed to pick the agency that would be that lead. In 2023, the placement of the new moratorium. Prior to the submission of the Carringer application ensured the county would have time to accomplish the required studies and addition of large scale solars to update our documents and ordinances. We have already began that process with our planning director and planning commission. Proper sensitive citing for large scale solar is a priority in our county. In review, I could not come to rest on any chapter.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Next we'll hear from County Commissioner Jacob Anderson.
That's Jacob, J A C O B, Anderson, A N D E R S O N. Dear members of the Energy Facility Site Evaluation Council. I'm here to express my concerns on the proposed Carringer solar project and to request that you do a full environmental impact statement. As a county commissioner, it is my responsibility to ensure the best interest of the community are taken into account. And I believe a full EIS is necessary to fully assess the potential impacts of this project. The Carringer solar facility is a significant development. With a capacity of 160 megawatts, this will be one of the largest solar facilities in our region. It will have significant impacts on our environment and our community. As such, it is essential that a full EIS is conducted to provide a thorough and comprehensive analysis of the potential environmental and social impacts of this project. There are several key factors that support the need for a full EIS. First and foremost, the proposed project is located in an area of significant environmental sensitivity. As the ACS has over 900,000 cubic yards of earth being moved, the potential impacts of this project on these sensitive areas must be thoroughly assessed to ensure they are protected. Secondly, the proposed project has a potential to impact the health and safety of our community. The construction and operation of the solar facility of this scale will generate a significant amount of traffic, noise and dust. These impacts could have adverse impacts on the nearby residences and businesses. And it is essential that they are, that these are thoroughly assessed and mitigated. Both solar projects going on in this county currently and through the process have been required to do an EIS. Even though they have far less environmental as well as community concerns. Finally, the proposed project has the potential to impact our local economy. While I recognize the potential benefits of solar facilities such as the job creation, increased tax revenues. It is essential that the potential negative impacts on other sectors of our economy are assessed. For example, the visual impact of a large solar facility could impact our tourism, which has, which isn't a significant economic driver in the region. In conclusion, I believe that a fully.
Thank you for your comment, Commissioner.
Next we'll hear from Sherri Boussquet.
Sherri Boussquet, S H E R I B O U S Q U E T. Welcome to our beautiful county. I hope you enjoyed our mountain views. I don't believe any of you should be here today, but here we are. I don't believe you have territorial jurisdiction in our county. And I am asking for legal proof. I've sent in my documentation. I don't believe you have that authority to supersede our, our comprehensive plan and our land planning. I would, again, we request to have that proof that you have territorial jurisdiction. Furthermore, our county does have a moratorium. It was in place prior than to you accepting this application. And that's shameful that you did. You should have stopped right there. Everything should have stopped right there. It should stop right here. You're violating RCW 8910005, farmland preservation. You refuse to go on our site tour to see the farmland, the active farmland that's being farmed right now. How will you eat? How will you feed your family when you take away all the farmland? People are worried China, I'm going off script, people are worried China is buying up farmland. Well, when you destroy our farmland with black glaring glass. Dripped of all of its topsoil, a dust bowl, how will we eat? Will China feed us? Their farmland won't have solar panels. They won't put their solar panels that we buy from them on that farmland. Furthermore, I find that you need to find significant environmental damage with this project. No EIS, this needs to stop now, right here, right now, today. You are people, you should do no harm by citing that facility going further. You will harm every single person in this room, every single person in this town. We already have an economic issue here. We need economic growth. We don't need to be destroyed. We don't need to be destroyed. Find significant, it is not consistent with our.
Thank you for your comment, ma'am. And for our next speaker.
Next we'll hear from Greg Wagner.
Greg Wagner, G R E G W A G N E R. Cease members are submitting this following comments for the record concerning the certification of the Carragher solar project. The ASC submitted by Cypress Creek Renewables for the Carragher solar project is flawed, filled with errors, omissions, inaccuracies and non factual information. There is no purpose for this project other than corporate profits. It will do more harm than good. Clickatuck County has a history of ranching and farming. This project is not consistent with the current land use and its proposed location is not consistent with Clickatuck County Comprehensive Plan. This project is also not compatible in the area proposed. For these reasons, this project should not be certified. There are multiple significant issues that cannot be mitigated. This project should not be allowed to, on productive farmland as it violates the RCW 891005. And the farmland, it's a farmland preservation act. And the, and it also violates the USDA Farmland Protection Act. Citing this project on thousands of acres of productive farmland reduces the food supply for Americans. And makes our country more reliant on food sourced from other countries, countries which still apply harmful chemicals to those crops. Chemicals which were outlawed in the United States years ago. This contaminated food source endangers the lives of Americans. If a preliminary site study would have been done, it would have been obvious that this project is in an inappropriate location and cannot be sensitively cited. The ASC is poorly written with many assumptions and inaccurate data. Many of the required studies are out of date. Many studies were performed by Tetra Tech. The accuracies of those studies are questionable considering Tetra Tech is under investigation by the Department of Justice for environmental fraud. And two employees have already been sentenced to prison. These studies should not be accepted and performed again by an independent firm hired by EFSEC. EFSEC should stop trusting the applicant study. The ASC failed to accurately evaluate project.
Thank you for your comments, sir. For the next speaker.
Deb Wagner.
O R A H W A G N E R. These are my comments why Carragher solar project should not be certified. 201 days of sunshine per year here. Carragher will not be successful. You have to have sunshine to have a solar site. That is approximately one half of the year's sunshine. The other half, I guess, will freeze to death. This just proves that it's all about money, not the needs of the citizens. Number two, the Clean Water Act is a federal law enacted in 1948. And amendments made in 1972 to protect our water. Our water should not be contaminated by solar sites. Number three, an RCW 89.10.005 written to preserve farmland. Carragher solar cited on farmland. Carager Solar cited on farmland violates state law. Everyone needs food to sustain their lives. And to cite Carager Solar on farmland is irresponsible. Do not certify this project and take away our food. There are two people in jail from Tetra Tech for criminal acts. Tetra Tech is now being investigated by the Department of Justice for fraudulent environmental acts. I do not want Cypress Creek Renewables in our county doing business. Carager Solar Site will not bring enough energy to sustain life, the solar site as we know it today. The Carager Solar Project is not consistent with Clickatuck County land use plans and has many significant problems that cannot be mitigated and therefore cannot be certified. I will fight for our people for the reasons I have just spoke about. Governor Inslee is not representing only himself. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your comment. And before our next speaker steps up, I will ask that you please keep, keep all comments on, on the topic of the, the, the proposed project. And, and with that, some of the comments have strayed off topic a little bit with regard to Justice Department criminal investigations or opinions about, about different political policies. This is an opportunity to comment on this project itself. So with that, would you please call our next speaker?
Delmar Eldred.
I oppose this large scale solar project for Clickatuck County. It's going to destroy the landscape, the farm culture. The loss of thousands of acres of tillable land will be gone forever. Grazing area for cattle, wildlife, and the rainwater that runs off these panels release cartridges and cadmium into the soil along with the erosion that pollute nearby streams and surface water. The increased risk of fire and, and health problems that come from the electromagnetic field which severely affect some people and it's called electromagnetic hypersensitivity. The herbicides that are being used to prevent vegetational growth in these towns also contaminate and run off, the runoff water. And the water that it's going to take to clean millions of these panels twice a year. These projects also limit the opportunity for economic growth, cause loss of farm service employment, and harm the quality of life for many people and future generations. If this agency's purpose is to ensure protection of the environmental quality and address the concerns the public has on the negative impact that these large scale solar projects have on the community, then I cannot see why you would approve something that has such a damning effect on the future of Clickatuck County. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And our next speaker.
Candy Magnuson.
Please, if you, if you would please still speak into the mic, the people that are joining us, either, either by telephone or online, that's the only way they'll be able to hear you. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, Candy Magnuson, C A N D Y M A G N U S O N. Eighty-two years old, four foot eleven and pissed off, okay? I don't have much time on this earth, but when I go, I hope that I have saved some of this beautiful property here in Goldendale and Centerville. You know, guys, I resent, I resent this money, this new green deal money coming from the government to pay for you guys' and no, nothing personal, your wages and stuff, okay? And put our land in jeopardy. We're not going to have, you know, I'm a farmer. There's farmers in here. We're not, we got to have the hay for our horses, our cows, our goats, our everybody, okay? We send it out to foreign countries, our hay goes and goes out to foreign countries and stuff too. But I'll tell you what, I've seen a lot of things in here and this is the saddest thing I've seen in my lifetime. I hope that you guys, you guys are getting paid with our money, okay? Because I pay taxes. I still pay taxes. And new green, green deal, that's tax money. And so I hope that you guys will take us serious here because we are serious here. We love our property. We love our land. We've, we've, we're related to other people here and stuff. And the people that have signed up, I'm sorry, I'm sorry that you did. Because your ancestors are going to pay for it. And that's why I'm standing here to save my ancestors. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Russ Hanson.
So H A N S O N. Trying to get this down to two minutes. My wife and I live immediately adjacent to this proposed project. From our front door, we have a view of over 300 acres of solar panels, a new substations and two acres of lithium ion battery storage. So there are nine homes immediately in our area that will be affected by this large scale project. Today I wanted to talk briefly about the visual impact assessment that was added as an end to this application. This assessment is incomplete and obviously weighted towards Cypress Creek who hired him to do it. I have numerous examples throughout the 59 page report, but only have time here to, to go over a couple. First being the key observation points. There were seven key observation points selected to be representative of the landscape of this project. The factors in considering these key observation points include locations with sensitive viewers, i.e. local residents and motorists. But yet not one local resident was included in the report. Furthermore, identifying groups of individuals that would likely be sensitive to visual change is an important part of the visual assessment process in determining this. Most being the most critical viewpoints, i.e. views from community residential areas and recreational areas. Again, not one residence had a view assessment done and included in this report. Why is that? How can FSEC make an informed decision on the visual impact assessment if they don't have all the information? I would request that this assessment by Tetra Tech not be considered by FSEC and that FSEC hire their own independent company to do a complete visual impact assessment. In conclusion, I'd just like to state that I am not against solar. I just would like to see it sensibly cited. And next to homes is definitely not sensibly cited. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And our next speaker, please.
Amy Hansen.
K A N, S O N. Thank you for taking your time listening to comments. This is my life. This is our life. We bought our property 12 years ago, 40 acres. It was our dream retirement property. We never expected this to happen. The substation went in. Six months after we bought our, bought our property, we had no idea it was coming. We weren't advised, notified at all. There was nothing we could do about it at that point. We have a beautiful view. We have Mount Hood, Mount Adams, Mount St. Helens. On a clear day like today, tip of Mount Jefferson, sweeping views of the Goldendale Valley and Simcoe Mountains. This is why we moved here. We're surrounded by beautiful farming and country. We have the best neighbors in the world. We bought into a development, 20 or parcels. There are 240 acres. We found out in 2020 when we retired and tried to buy an additional 40 acres after we sold our that 40, that it was the 100 acres that were not already purchased or lived on, or at least to Cypress Creek. We had no idea that was coming. And in addition to that, there's going to be over two acres of battery storage within our development. Terrifying. I know that they say that they're the safest. You know, but still it's like everything's safe until something happens. You know, we, we moved here for the view, the farmland, the community. We shop local. You know, we go to the hospital local, you know, we get our car fixed local. I mean, we lived, we've moved here for the community. We want to stay here. We don't want to have to move if we can even sell our property. We don't blame the people leasing. We know where they are. They're making a lot of money. But we're concerned about our property values, you know, and our quality of life and safety also. So please consider that in making your decision. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker, please.
Dave Thiess.
My name is Dave Thiess, T H I E S, for Columbia Gorge Audubon Society. Clickatuck County has been targeted as an energy sacrifice zone. When public sentiment turned against a corporate energy takeover of our county, that industry doubled down and brought to us their energy overlay zone supposedly offered authored by our Economic Development Director, who just happened to come from renewable energy and returned to renewable energy when the E O Z was approved. That E O Z streamlined regulations and tellingly greatly reduced public comment. Far less than 1% of local people spoke in favor of the E O Z. And yet our county commissioners accepted a few boosters and proponents for countywide support. Considering the magnitude of the E O Z, it should have been put to a vote of the people. But our county leaders could not have allowed that because they knew it would never have, it would have been decisively defeated. Federal, state and county government all support and encourage renewable energy. They have legislated tax breaks and subsidize and subsidies for renewables. Federal and state wildlife agencies know that to oppose renewable, renewables would be, could be fatal to their budgets. We believe this is greatly hindered and much needed.
And sir, I, I, I don't mean to interrupt and, and all, we can pause and, and reset some of the time. The, the comments in, in this public hearing need to be related to this specific project. So if you can please narrow the scope of the comments to the same rather than generally about the projects. Once again, we'll, we'll go ahead and back up your time if, if you have additional remarks to make, sir.
Micah, if you want to, you can turn off this mic, but I'll tell you what. We all sat in this room for an hour while we had chit chat. And now you cut us down from three minutes to two minutes.
Sir, so
You don't have to act on what we say, but you should listen.
Sir, if you'd like to make comments, we'll, we'll, we'll go ahead and restart your time. If your comments have concluded, then, 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 then you may submit additional remarks in writing. Thank you, sir. Right. Would, would you please call the next speaker?
Joan Fry.
To share with you an excerpt, oh, come on. I would like to share with you an excerpt from my testimony to April 18th hearing before Clickatuck County Commissioners regarding their solar moratorium. I was one of the signators of the energy overlay and want to clarify the rationale and the process. Excuse me. Wind power was headed our way and we wanted to be prepared. The question was, what did the citizens want in our county and where did they want it? We held numerous public hearings in all communities countywide. West End said, no, thanks. The East End was supportive. Many saw the windmill income as an opportunity and
And ma'am, I, again, and please pause the time. This is not a, a public information hearing regarding Okay, then, 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 then you may please go ahead.
Then on to the Board of County Commissioners for more hearings and public process concurrently. We also did a full blown environmental impact study, which was lengthy, expensive and more public process. Each wind power project still had to do site specific applications, just not an environmental impact study which the county had already done. At that time, solar energy was nothing more than a rooftop panel. Solar panels, given the rapid advances energy technology has been making, the 1996 E O Z should have been updated 15 years ago with as much citizen input as possible. As it stands, the E O Z doesn't address the magnitude of solar projects and their impacts in any way and shouldn't be considered a document that allows them. In addition to that statement made to the county commissioners, my message to this body is that Carager Solar and future solar applications belong in the hands of the citizens through their elected county commissioners and those decisions must be made according to county land use regulations. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. And just to, to clarify, when I'm referring to on topic and off topic, I, I'm not making any assessments of, of the relevance of the comments that people have in another forum or, or in another place. Here today, though, the purpose of this informational meeting is, is very narrowly defined by statute, R C W 8050090 and Washington Administrative Code 46326025. So this is your opportunity to comment about this project specifically. I, I, I will need to interject if I hear further commentary about, about decisions of county commissioners and or broad, broad policy as it pertains to, to, to projects of this nature. All right. And, and there also, there, there will be an additional land use hearing in this matter on, on May 15th. But once again, if, if the comments are general in nature about projects like this, I, I will need to interject to limit the scope of it. But, but with that, we do want to hear the comments that people have about this particular project. So would you please call our next speaker?
Gene Callan.
Gene Callan, G E N E C A L L A N. I live at 38 Knight Road, adjacent to the project. I'm going to take my robust two minutes and look at the graphics on the screen and look at the impact, a graphic impact on our Goldendale Valley, what I think Carager implies. Next slide, please. This is a map of that valley. You can see Goldendale in the middle, Centerville down below and the Columbia River to the south, Highway 97 running north and south. This is homed over 8,500 people. We're a, a traditional rural town and we're proud of our town. This is our home. Next slide, please. It's a, it's an agrarian valley. We have over 60,000 acres of farmland irrigated and non irrigated. You've heard a lot about the R C W that, that demands that we honor and respect that farmland and that applies here. Next slide, please. There are over 100 miles of river streams, swales, waterways that, that run through the Goldendale Valley, all feeding into the little Clickatuck and the big Clickatuck and finally the Columbia River. In addition to that, as the Department of Ecology knows, there are, there are hundreds of domestic water wells out there. Hours being one, it's within 400 feet of our property line and, and, and this project. So that, that's a, a big issue for us. Next slide, please. The, the study and, and we recognize because we live there, there are many species of animals and plants in this Goldendale Valley. Three of them, I believe, are a priority or a threatened status. Uh, one that wasn't mentioned and ignored is the golden and the bald eagle, which every resident out there knows is uh in and around that valley. Uh, in addition to that, there, we believe there are some first foods, for example, the camus root that uh, that lives in that valley, in our valley. Next slide, please. And this is the most important slide that I want to share with you. This is a graphic representation. I'd, I'd ask you to look at the little square on the right. That is a six hundred and forty-one section uh, uh, scale and yellow graphically depicts nine to ten thousand acres and the Carragher project will be a pilot project that will trigger all these others.
Mr. Callan. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir.
We will save the PowerPoint as a comment as well.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, please call the next speaker.
Mike Aldritt.
Good evening. My name is Michael Aldritt, M I K E A L L D R I T T. Thank you for the time to comment on this project. Uh, we do appreciate it. I'm here tonight speaking in favor of the project. Uh, the reason I'm speaking in favor for the project is I've seen um, the way that it's been helping the rural communities throughout Washington, Eastern Oregon and Eastern Washington. Um, it allows us as I guess let me back up a little bit. So I represent ironworkers in the state of Oregon and five counties in southwest Washington. So I've seen the benefits to the members of the building trade affiliates that build these projects and the ability that it gives us as accredited apprenticeship programs to bring in people from the rural communities of Eastern Washington and Eastern Oregon. Um, I think they're very important to be able to keep building the skilled workforce that we're going to need to move into the future with fossil fuels going away and uh renewable projects coming into play. It's, I think it's very important that we use our own local people to build these projects and not have people coming in from out of states to out of state to build these projects and therefore training our apprentices is very important. It, it also helps us get closer to that carbon neutral um for the state of Washington. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
All right. Thank you for your comments, sir. Um, and, and just once again, uh, as a reminder, um, for, for speakers who are, are going to uh speak um, for the remainder of this evening, um, please tie your comments to this specific project. Um, the next speaker, please.
David West.
Dave West, D A V W S T. Unusual event this evening. I agree with all three of my commissioners, all at the same time. Uh, I'm not against solar and I'm certainly not against solar being in our county. Uh, but as you're considering this project, I do believe you need to consider, I looked at Gene's slides, there's eighty-five hundred people here. Only thirty-five hundred people live in the city limits. And that's the same population that was forty years ago. All of our growth has been in the rural areas. Now, land use studies, real estate value studies, not paid for by the corporations indicate twenty to thirty percent drop in value depending where you're at. If you go forward to this, let's put a requirement, they compensate the people for that drop in value. Now, let's get down to brass tacks. I used to work for a corporation that in the end, for over twenty years, they were owned by one of the world's largest corporations. The bottom line is the bottom line. Cypress Creek is not in the business of making solar. They're in the business of making money. And the reason they wish to site here is because of the very short, cheap distance to connect to the substation. Now, if they don't build here, if you choose to deny it, we have lots of room in this county without the conflicts. And it's all within the distance they have previously stated, they can effectively build power lines yet. We will not lose green energy projects. Our county will not lose money. We have the capacity for that ten thousand acres of solar uh production here. But maybe you can require them to spend more money and cite it where we won't have the conflicts. Almost out of time. I found their whole plan, actually to be a plan to have a plan, kind of like I ask a high school student to grade his own term paper. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Dave Barta.
D A V E, D A V E B A R T A. Good afternoon, council and Cypress Creek representatives. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today regarding the Carragher application. As you have heard or will hear, there are several significant reasons to reject the application. Most of my discussion centers on the forfeit of this project application is relative to local land use. Notably, the area proposed has been zoned extensive agriculture and general rural for decades. In the Clickatuck County zoning ordinance, the purpose for extensive agriculture zoning is, I quote, "to encourage the continued practice of farming on lands best suited for agriculture" and "to prevent or minimize conflicts between common agricultural practices and various non-farm uses." In the case of nearly all the Carragher application, there is no continued practice of farming that can or will happen. In some cases, leasingers have leased virtually all their ground. They will, they have no intention to continue to farm it. Similarly, the general rural zone's purpose is quoting, "to maintain openness and the rural character of the countryside, to protect the county's water and other natural resources and to provide areas which are appropriate for typical rural development." The Carragher application states there will be over one thousand three hundred acres of industrial panels with an extended height of twelve and a half feet on roughly two thousand acre parcel. Carragher states they will surround most of the area with a six-foot-high chain link fence topped by barbed wire. This hardly gives the impression of quoting, "maintaining the openness and rural character of the countryside." Additionally, the industrial solar developer hopes to place sixty-three megawatts of lithium-ion battery storage within about a thousand feet of several residences, visualize dozens of semi-trailer sized batteries. They say they are safe and they won't burn, but when something goes wrong, it goes really wrong. And it means evacuations of hundreds or maybe even a thousand people and the negative effect on land. The battery storage site is about three-quarters of a mile north where both forks of Blockhouse Creek come out of the ground and a couple of miles north of the stream that feeds Goldendale Fish Hat Tree. Under G M A requirements, Carragher application will result in a land conversion. Clickatuck County has zoning ordinances for a reason. This project does not meet them. Please reject the expedited application request. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Tom Holub.
Thousand and six, my wife and I own four and a half acres. My property is not directly affected. I'm just outside of uh Goldendale. Um, but we moved here for a very specific reason and, and this may sound general, but this directly, uh, I'm, I'm intended directly uh cite this project because we moved here for the natural beauty of this place. Um, shortly after we bought our place, I'm going to get off topic, topic there, but um what I basically want to say is, we feel like the property values in this county are going to go down and, and the overall impact of this project is not going to benefit this county. I mean, we need to see some uh economic benefit from uh this type of a project in our county. There's no other reason to despoil our natural beauty. Uh, and for that reason, I ask that the uh, that the council recommended the government, governor that uh this uh project not move forward. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir. And before you step away, um, would you please spell your name for the record? No problem at all.
Tom Holub, T O M H O L U B.
Thank you. And please call our next speaker.
Kenneth McKeon.
K N N E T H, capital M C, capital K U N E. Welcome to Goldendale, the Golden Gate to the Evergreen State, not the Golden Gate to the solar mistake. It will be a big mistake to cite Carragher in the, in the area that they're proposing. You've heard a lot of arguments that back that statement up. One thing, the uh the whole, the whole uh green energy movement is like the home clean, it's like smoke and mirrors in a way. And it's like trashing the planet. Citing these things in places that uh changes the complexion, the, the face of the landscape. Uh, thousands of people are going to be affected every day. It's not like the other end of the county where maybe two people live within two or three thousand acres. Here at, on, on Knight Road, we're all going to be seeing it all the time. And I, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm not totally against solar. I mean, I, I'd love to see my, those are my friends out there. I've known them most of my life. I'd like to see them benefit from the technology, but the scope and the scale is uh uh, it just doesn't fit. We're a rural county, we, we, rural community. We don't really need the, 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 uh, the glitz and the glamour of becoming the energy uh center of Washington State and feed the megalomaniac governor that uh wants to impose.
And sir, I'm, the, the road that you're heading down, we, we need to contain the comments on.
I apologize for going off track. I'm done. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir.
James, apologies. James Wilson.
James Wilson, J A M E S, uh, Wilson, W I L S O N. I'm probably the bad guy here. I was the general foreman on the Lund Hill project for the ironworkers. I'm not saying that this project is located in the right area. Uh, what I will say is there is some short-term, there are some benefits to the construction of it. While we were working on Lund Hill, we had approximately seventy people working. Those, a lot of the, some of the people live here. Some of the people, most of the people came from out. The store, a lot of small businesses benefited from them, living here during the week. A lot of the money made stayed in this community. And it's, it's, it, it helps a lot of small businesses. And again, I don't, I don't know about the location of this project, but the project will have benefits. And it seems like everybody that comes up here, nobody said, nobody gives it credit. But anyway, uh, also, we, while we were here, we took in some workers from local areas and it gives a chance to the people that might not get a chance to earn a living wage job. Uh, the ironworkers is a career uh where if you work there for thirty, thirty-five years, you get to retire with a decent retirement and it just benefits uh the community as well. I'm done. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Ryan Mo.
Uh, we, we can also go to the next speaker and then give him an opportunity when he comes back in, just next in line.
Okay, that'd be Roceal Dimmick.
Good evening. I am Roceal, R O C E L, Dimmick, D I M M I C K. And I am a resident here um in Clickatuck County. And I will be one of the residents closest to the battery storage um facility. And looking through your project and your proposal, I didn't catch what kind of brand that battery was, that it's going to be utilized and how the, how it's going to be recycled. And where can I find these studies that they're safe for residents? I see that you just say it, but I don't see any studies that support this. Where's the cradle-to-grave reports on these? Um, what determine the location of the battery? Typically, the winds will blow from the west side and that's where it's located on the west side of the substation. So if it were to explode or catch fire, wouldn't that just make the fire even more difficult to, to address? And there was a fire um at one of these facilities, actually in September of last year, um, and it was in Elkhorn, California. And I just want to know like what the plan is for residents when this happens and there's toxic smoke going into our air and it's blowing towards Goldendale. Where is that report that it's safe? Where's those studies? Why aren't they included in your proposal? In your evacuation plans, you, you mentioned that the fire departments have all been, you know, on board and working with you, but we didn't see that happen with Lund Hill. Um, they didn't address what our community might have to do in, in case of an emergency with these battery storage facilities would, would happen to catch on fire. And these are widely used in South uh Korea. Um, and it turns out that in a two-year period, there were twenty-three fires at these battery storage facilities. So I'm not too excited about living next to your project. Um, especially when I don't have the facts that are backing up your proposals and and how you can just assure that it's going to not affect my air quality when you strip this, this topsoil down and I, I witnessed the fifteen, eighty mile an hour winds that go through this county and I really hope that you guys consider all of these.
All right. Please, please conclude your comments uh with, with time, uh, time having concluded. Um, also, um, because you had a number of questions for the applicant, um, if you would like to, to leave a number or contact information, completely your choice, you, you may, you, you may take a moment to leave that with him, but, okay. All right. And with the next, next speaker, um, I know that, uh, the, the person who you called, uh, just before our last speaker had stepped outside. Would you please call that, that speaker's name again? I'm sorry. My misunderstanding, I thought you meant he had stepped outside momentarily. Um, so then please go to the next name on the list.
Aubrey Newton.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay? I'm joining virtually.
Yes, we can hear you.
Wonderful. Um, Aubrey Newton, A U B R E Y N E W T O N. Good evening and thank you Chair Drew and the entire commission for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Aubrey Newton. I am the Director of the Northwest Laborers and Employers Cooperation and Education Team. I work with the Labor's International Union of North America for the Northwest region, which encompasses nine states in the Northwest and provinces in the Western Canada area, which includes Washington State. In Washington specifically, we have over fifteen thousand members in the state. I won't get into the full details due to the stake of uh keeping on topic. But our members have worked in many projects in the southwest Washington area and we are very much in support of this project. We are here in this evening in favor of this project and we look forward to seeing how Cypress Creek will work with communities in the area to ensure that underrepresented workers are included and locals are given, local workers are given the opportunity to build Washington's energy goals. Um, our members specifically um in this area have very large experience being trained and ready to handle over sixty percent of the entire project from material handling, uh, concrete work and, and many other scopes of work throughout the project that we've done throughout southwest Washington and specifically in the Goldendale community. And with that, overall, our members deserve to work on projects like these and our members deserve to work for contractors and developers that value unions, good-paying jobs and building communities in all sectors. With that, thank you for your time.
Right. Thank you for your comment. And um I, I will ask um that, that people please um don't remark while other speakers are speaking. Um, I, I am screening comments for whether or not they're on topic um and, and I'll make that determination. I, I will ask people to please remain silent while other people are speaking. Thank you. Next speaker.
Justin Sellers.
Justin Sellers, J U S T I N, S E L L E R S. Uh, thank you, Commissioner. Uh, I appreciate the time to be able to speak to you and uh I am in behalf of the, of this project itself. I represent members of this community. I am the President of Labor's Union International North America, M I L I U N A Local Three Three Five. I'm uh representing the membership here. And uh we represent hundreds of hardworking men, women in southwest Washington area as long as in Clickatuck County itself. Our members build and construct all forms of energies, dams, winds and solar projects from start to finish. I'm here this evening. I'm here this evening to advocate for this project and support it in full. Furthermore, we're here to be on the representation of a participative utilization contractor compliance, diversity, equity goals and CEDO requirements. We look forward to working with Cypress Creek and employing local hire and giving great living wage jobs and building the future of Clickatatt County. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Jim Hill.
Jim Hill, J I M H I L L. You know, as a, gosh, the things I've heard today. As a fourth generation landowner on this property, I am angry and disappointed that the people who lived here a couple of years, 10 years, few months, are trying to dictate what we fourth, fifth, sixth generation landowners can legally do with our property. And yes, I am one of those money mongers. Property is on my, or the project, Carragher Project is on, excuse me, my property. And you know, I've heard a lot of emotion today, but really not much fact about the Carragher Project. 19 to $30 million in taxes? Why would the county turn that down? As Dave said earlier, the population of Goldendale is 3,600, more or less same as it was 40 years ago. But the population has grown to 8,500. Where, where are those houses? They're on farm ground. I can have, I could legally put 21 houses on my property. Each one of those houses will have a well into the aquifer, another straw in the bottle. It's not an unlimited supply. Lost my train of thought. And so, you know, I don't know, I don't know what my kids and grandkids are going to do, but like I say, there could very easily be 21 houses. Farmland is gone forever. The project, 20, 30 years, farmland is back. And Goldendale will thrive and prosper in the meantime.
All right. Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Carl Amidon.
Oh, so I guess I'm kind of on the block. Carl Amidon, K A R L A M I D O N. Okay. I guess I'm kind of the bad guy here from what it sounds like. I'm, I'm right in the middle of this project. Been on Knight Road for 71 years and almost 72. Don't plan to leave. It's going to be right around, right around me. I've farmed in this community my whole life. I've struggled. No one has ever paid my taxes for me. No one has ever offered to help. We've done it ourselves. We're stayed here on Knight Road. When my folks came here, there was 10 farms on Knight Road. There's one today. Not that we own all the land. I wish I did, but we don't. But we do farm quite a bit of it. And the development of all these people moving in here, that's what's causing our problem. At least the solar panels, there's a fence around it and there's no people, no problems. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Elaine Harvey.
Elaine Harvey, E L A I N E, H A R V E Y. Today I speak as a resident of Clickatatt County. I lived here most of my life except the time when I went to college. I'm also speaking as a Comethbo Band member, which is the Rock Creek Band. We are the first people of this land. I live in this direct vicinity of the Carragher Project. I decided to live there because our first foods are there. I can walk out my door and I can pick some fresh food. I can go down the road. I can pick berries that are native. I have concern for the native plants, the native insects, the native wildlife that's going to be affected. And we always speak on behalf of those who cannot speak for themselves. And that's why I work in natural resources. I have a bachelor's degree in fisheries and aquatic sciences. I have a master of science degree in environmental law, hydrology and geomorphology. And I'm working on my PhD in natural resources. I dedicate my life to natural resources and our first fruits, first foods and our cultural resources. And this project will be detrimental to all the organisms that live in this area. I see them on a daily basis. This guy back here says, he only sees four deer. I don't. I live there. I see all the wildlife. I know what's there. And I, you know, this project is like the worst nightmare that I can ever have in my life because I know what it's going to do to this land, to the community. And it's going to build off from this project more and more in this area, which is a really important culturally area for the Yakamas and for the Comethbo, Comethbo Band, which is one part of the tribes that make up the Yakama. So, you know, I'm speaking on behalf of those who can't speak for themselves.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker, please.
Kyle Hanson.
Kyle Hanson, K Y L E, A N S O N. I'm here on behalf of Ironworkers Local 29. Just wanted to assure the committee that they have competent, plenty of workers to complete this job with trained skills and experienced and torque procedures and to get the job done correctly and provide deadline. While we're here, it's to support, we support the community and the local revenue. We also support whatever local infrastructure is being given to progressing America. If this project does happen, I encourage to use Local 219 workers as they set, set their standards, excellence high and take pride in our work. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Dana Peck.
Dana Peck, D A N A P E C K. I'm the retired director of economic development for Clickatatt County and managed the energy overlay process in the late 1990s, 2000s. I'm also the guy Dave was talking about and came here doing wind projects and went off and did them again after the industry came back. So you need a face for that story. It's my face. Typically, I stand up and agree with Commissioner Fry and then sit down and say thank you. The two things I like to point out that you've heard tonight that I think speak well of Carragher is what they bring to us in terms of tax benefits. Keeping a small county healthy is not easy. Depending on how you count it, they're worth about a million dollars a year to the immediate small districts around it. You can, and that's about as good a price on the value of you as you can get. I'm much more in agreement with Jim Hill and the landowners. One of the reasons we did the energy overlay zone originally was to keep houses off farm ground. We knew with our timber industry dying, with the smelter closing, that the only way we had to keep our landowners healthy was find a competitive advantage. As Commissioner Fry said, initially it was wind. It became solar. I wish the county would have updated its energy overlay zone. We worked on when that started to happen, just like we did when we saw winds start to happen. And in my opinion, that's why you exist. You know, if the county would have updated itself, we wouldn't be having this conversation or this meeting and it'd all be under the energy overlay zone, which is very successfully handled, almost two gigawatts of green power in the county. Thanks for your time.
All right. Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Warren Daze.
Good evening.
And please state and spell your name, sir, for the record.
Warren Daze, W A R R E N D A Z E Y. First, I want to say I'm in full support of the construction workers, the laborers and the ironworkers. And I can think they could get some pretty good jobs somewhere else. This project that, that you're proposing, the 300 jobs it's going to bring in, everybody in this room knows are coming from out of state or out of the area. So that's a no-brainer. When the job's done, they leave. The project stays here. When the project's done, how do you get rid of it? You can't eat solar panels. Most of what I was going to say has, has previously been covered, but my wife and I live on 44 acres on Pine Forest Road. We have an amazing view. It's a million dollar view, same as the Hanson's. And this project backs right up to our property. And that's going to drop our property value right through the cellar. So in, as far as, does it hurt the local citizens? You bet it does. And it's not just me. There's lots of other folks that's adversely affected with this project. A little while back, we had a county commissioner meeting with them. And there are several times people brought up, they come up out of the gorge, they see this valley and they feel like they're in God's country. Well, why would we want to cover God's country with solar panels? Is it because we don't believe in God or we just don't have any respect for Him? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Tom Tastro.
I'm T O M and the last name is Tastro, T A S T O. I want to build on Delmar Eldredge's comments on water runoff. And also I want to touch briefly on what Dana Peck had to say. And I hope you'll accept what I'm about to say because it's out of state. Okay? The Virginia Department of Environmental Quality, as of late March, is now regulating stormwater from solar farms to include the panels themselves. Previously, only the foundations or bases under the, each panel was considered impervious. But under Governor Glenn Youngkin's administration, the panels themselves will be now classified as impervious as well. The rain hitting the panels causes concentrated flow erosion as it drips off the panels. The previous administration of Governor Ralph Northam had ignored existing stormwater management guidelines in their efforts to prioritize or fast-track solar projects. They ignored concerns that have continued to be raised by local officials and key stakeholders, of which we have a lot of here in this room. I, I have worked as a soil conservation technician, so I know a little bit about concentrated flow and runoff and things like that. The energy overlay zone needs to be revised. We really cannot proceed with this project without the revision of the energy overlay zone. Dana said it was done back in 1996 when solar was not even a gleam in her eye. So anyway, I don't think it's a good idea. I wouldn't be standing here if I did. But, thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Mike Tobin.
M I K E T O B I N. I'm not from this community. I wish my community in Yakama had shown up like this. But, what I'm really impressed by is the idea that forward-thinking of the county itself, considering green energy, including this, this action should fall under that from what little information I've garnered today. I do not know why EFSEC is participating in this at this time. What I will say that is independent and different from what has been stated today is there are always mitigation elements of projects like this. There is a loss of agricultural land that is not being mitigated for. It must be included. I think that it should be a requirement that the Washington Department of Agriculture be here supporting the loss of agricultural land through a mitigation process, just like any other wildlife habitat. You can't replace this, but you can sure protect other areas that are vital to the county through use of conservation easements. So I'd offer that as another positive comment to this, to this fine group. And again, I applaud everyone who has spoken today. It is interesting to see the diversity and I hope and wish the best of luck for you here.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
That is the end of the speakers who signed up.
So if there are others in the room who've not yet spoken, Chair Drew indicated that because we have 10 minutes left, we'll invite you to do so. I, I see a, this was the first hand up and then I see a second hand up and a third.
Shelley Westland, S H E L L E Y, Westland, W E S T L U N D. I came to Clickatatt County in 2010. I want to first say that I'm extremely proud to be a Clickatatt community member. And I am so proud of my community right now today and how they have spoken up. I have land that I believe, 160 acres of it is being proposed. I have interest in that land. I don't own it outright. I'm in process of purchasing it. And I have, I think, part of those owners are considering putting solar panels on that upper piece. I believe that would be a horrid use of our land for all the reasons that have been spoken today, including we have runoff water that comes down through that land and goes straight into the little Clickatatt River. I agree that we, solar energy can be awesome. I plan to have solar on my home. However, where you are proposing to do this Corrigan project is absolutely inappropriate for our county, for our lands, for our people. For every single reason, we have other places that would be more appropriate for solar. And I really hope that you will really listen to, to all of us and that this is not appropriate on any way. I wish I had known that we could speak today. I would be more prepared. But I couldn't let the opportunity go by. I know there's other people that want to speak. And I hope that we can be in agreement, that we can do good things without harming our animals, our waterways and our land. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And yes, please go ahead and step up to the podium and, and state and spell your name for us.
I'm here on behalf of the Laborers Union 335. I want this to happen. The community needs to have more things for people work-wise or we will have to travel to someone else's area to get work. I did it for years. I installed oil and gas pipelines for over 12 years. This is the new stuff and I'd like to be able to stay home, which I live here, to be able to do my work for once.
Thank you, ma'am. And I saw one last hand. Please go ahead and step up, sir. Thank you, ma'am. And I saw one last hand. Please go ahead and step up, sir.
C A R L, C O N R O Y. I'm one of the bad guys. I have solar. I've visited with the commissioners. Dan knows. There are some things we really agree on. I'm a firm believer that solar is like a crop of grain. It needs to be harvested. But my main contention is what is done when it's over with? That's the commissioner's job and your job to make sure that when that solar company leaves, and if they do, that land is returned to normal. That all comes apart. Mostly, I want to thank the opposition. I appreciate you guys. I appreciate that everybody's been here. We can disagree, and I really appreciate that. I too am a pretty much pure food and drug guy. We've talked at length about chemical use on this ground. I have proposed sheep grazing. They have been very receptive to it. That we can graze that and use, maybe do that instead of all the chemical use for weeds. So while I think there are a lot of room for discussion and some things that we need to do, I do believe that with the commissioners and these people, that compromise can be reached. I really appreciate your time. I appreciate everybody showing up and the way we've conducted ourselves. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. And so now we'll go ahead and move to to participants online. This is an opportunity. We we have time to hear from up to three additional speakers. If you're, if you're on teams, please go ahead and raise your hand, and staff will identify the order. And I see, sir, if if we have time after. Has anybody online indicated a desire to speak? All right, then, sir, please go ahead and step up to the podium and state and spell your name.
Ken Branham, K E N B R A N H A M. I'm an ironworker. I've worked on several of these projects around here. I have actually put two kids through college. I've lived the American dream by building windmills, all this stuff. And I live close by, and this, this, this is green energy. It don't get no really any better. I've worked on powerhouses that are filthy and dirty. And this, and it's, it can be reclaimed, just like this gentleman says. So when this is all done, they come in, put some new topsoil down, and you got, basically, you can run cattle on it, you can farm it, you can do whatever you want. But we gotta do this because it helps out a lot of people. Not just me financially, but it's gonna help out the community. It's gonna turn on lights. This this area is gonna grow, and there's gonna be more homes out there. You know, it ain't just gonna be farm ground, everything. There's gonna be more homes that built in the area, and these things can turn the lights on. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, so at this time, we're going to conclude public comment. No, at this point, ma'am, the the public comment has concluded, but thank you for, if you do have anything else, so please feel free to sit, submit written written remarks. Chair Drew?
Thank you all for participating tonight. We appreciate hearing from all of you, and this meeting is adjourned.